Yeah, lights on.
It's on, but it's good.
Good evening. It's 6:00 PM, July 27th, 2022. I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local cable channel 18. Could we please rise and pledge the allegiance to the Constitution?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we're going to take public comments at the end of the agenda. My goal is, is to have the executive session be the last item. And so we'll take public comments just before executive session. That way, when we're done with executive session, we're done with the meeting. So I'll ask the public to leave their comments till the very end, just prior to executive session. Tonight Jonathan and Bill are absent, so sitting in the first hearing will be the three regular board members, Sharon and let's say, how about Brad, and then we'll switch over. But I do have a question. This is an extension of a public hearing, so did anybody sit on the public hearing? Either Brad or Bob's not here, so I asked him here.
I have to.
So I guess it has to be Brad, right? There you go. I'm not going to ask any further questions.
Don't make it sound like it has to be Brad.
Well, no, only because I should. No, I should be asking the following question. Did you read the transcript in reference to the application?
Yeah.
Perfect.
He was here for that.
Well, that's why I asked the question. All right, good. All right, so Sharon, would you please read the first continued hearing?
19 Merkentile Way, petitioner Capewide Construction requests a special permit under 174-25-G4-G5-G6-174-25-G14, 174-25-G18, and 174-45.6 of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of 7,272 square-foot metal building with contractor bays to be used for cabinet making with accessory storage, office showroom, retail, and paint booth on property located in an I-1 in light industrial overlay zone district. MAP 88, parcel 105, Mashpee, Mass., continued from July 13th, 2022, hearing at the request of the board.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corain representing the applicant Capewide Construction on the proposed building at 19 Merkentile Way. At the last board meeting, there were some items that were raised by Site Plan Review Committee that the board wanted to have reviewed by the requisite department heads, as well as my understanding is, though I know that Ed Pesci was retained by the town to review, by the board, to review the site plan and give the board back any comments. You know, going back over what, and I also sent a letter to address, you know, some of the things that were in that letter from Site Plan Review. Anything, everything dealing with the Board of Health issues, I'm hoping that the board is satisfied. The Board of Health did approve the variance for, for the septic system being underneath the parking. They've listed certain conditions in that approval. We're happy to have those, you know, incorporated in any decision by the board should they be fit to approve it. There's also a decision from the Board of Health regarding the paint booth. So again, you know, the Board of Health approved it. And again, you know, any conditions that may be part of that Board of Health approval can certainly be incorporated into the decision if the board were to see fit to approve the project. There was also a letter from the fire department saying that they reviewed the site plan and that they didn't find any issues with the, with the site plan. The only thing they said about the paint booth was that it complies with the Mass Fire Code. So we're certainly, you know, we're happy to, you know, have it conditioned. If the board sees fit to approve it, that it'd be conditioned in that manner. You know, Ed Pesci did send along some comments. I can, if, if the board wants John LaValley to speak on those, they, from our perspective, they're pretty minor, they could be addressed. I believe Ed contacted the building department today, certainly said that if the board were to approve the project, they could do so without having to continue and submit revised plans, that he could do it administratively and, you know, sign off on it before a building permit would be issued. So at least that's my understanding with the conversation that Ed had.
Is that a correct statement? Okay, so in fact, the peer review engineer stated that he would not be against a conditional approval.
Okay. And then I think the only, the changes to the site plan were two, one big one was the parking. So we added two parking spaces. We adjusted the building plan to show the showroom as retail. Retail is a, is a more intensive parking use, so we went with the retail. We added two parking spots. That's shown on the plan. And then the only other thing for the board to determine within their discretion is, you know, allowing the parking in the front.
So it seemed to me, correct me if I'm wrong, so your plan review dated May 17th, 2022. This board needs to determine, number one, because it was included in that letter, that we should make a decision if the parking should be allowed in the side or the front of the building.
Right, there are approximately, let me just see. There are six spaces that are in the front of the building. So generally speaking, parking is on the side or the rear. So the board would have to make a determination in its discretion that it's, you know, that the project would be allowable with six parking spaces in the front of the building.
Well, the board could just approve that plan.
Correct.
Which it directly approves of.
Correct, correct.
I'm just bringing up that specifically in the plan review process, they said that they're going to leave up to the zoning board of appeals the decision in reference to parking, right?
Right.
So we need to make sure that we determine that. I for one am okay with it. I think the plan is not overburdens them on the lot. I think it fits fine. I think it makes sense. It's not, the parking isn't right on the main street. It's set back. I think it's cited very well. That's my opinion.
I agree.
Ken, why don't I go around and just make sure of that? You hear that, Sharon?
Yeah.
Brad? You're okay with, all right. So the bottom line is, so the biggest thing that I think the ZBA had to make a determination on was the fact of the parking, and we're okay with it.
Right.
So that's good. So going down the plan review dated, statement, review dated May 17th, 2022, all the other items are either, are actually either fire or Board of Health. And I think that we can do Scott probably just make it subject to addressing all comments made in the plan review letter dated May 17th, 2022, if you choose to make a motion. Next question I have is, I know that the peer review engineer has an anticipated bill.
Is it dating any of their review?
I think it's, I think it's. I believe that peer review engineer anticipates billing this town $5,000. Am I correct, Mary Ann? So, before Chris yells at me. We don't have a town engineer.
Understood.
So you know what? It's the way it is. I, you know, I wish we did, but we don't. So I would like to have you agree to the fact that you will, prior to the pay, prior to your app, applying for a building permit, pay the peer review of, at this point in time, $5,000. And I hope it doesn't exceed that.
That's how Charlie used to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
I got to the $5,000.
Right.
If it's, we have no intention of making a living off of your peer review dollars.
Right, no, I know.
But I can tell you, if it's $3,000, $4,000, or even if it exceeds $5,000, my statement is, I think the motion has to be whatever the peer review dollars and cents are prior to the receipt of a, prior to the receipt of our application of billing it, it needs to be paid.
Yeah, I mean, understood. And, you know, really no different than how the planning board handles their peer review, that they actually take that $5,000 at the time of application. So I'm guessing that, you know, maybe going forward where you don't have a town engineer, that may be the, the process going forward.
And you're probably right. I'm just trying to move the, the application has already been extended. So I'm just trying to be aggressive and see what we can do in reference to getting this thing done, right?
Understood. And then the only other thing I would just note on the, the building plan, we did change that mezzanine dimensions as we talked about last time. So that's a change of the plan.
So your plan does depict that correctly?
Correctly.
All right, so what I would like to say is as follows, and then I'll go around with the board and the individual members. I would condition it upon the peer review engineers satisfied or being satisfied in reference to any and all of his comments that he has. And the name of that peer review is, gentlemen, is right here.
Question?
Yep. So I would say, if it's okay with everyone else, that prior to the applying for a building permit, that the applicant meets with the peer review engineer and satisfies all his comments and concerns. Does that make sense to you?
That makes sense.
Okay?
Prior to the building permit?
Application, yes. So we've got the peer review costs. We've got the peer review covered. We've got the plan review dated May 17th, 2022 covered. That would be a condition, right? Satisfaction of all conditions in the plan review letter. All right, take your time. Why don't I, when you're doing that, does that make sense? Why don't I go around the board? Thoughts, why don't I start with Brad? What are your thoughts? Does that, that make sense? Sharon, what do you think?
I'm good.
No problem.
Okay. I'm going to actually make a motion.
One question on that. Would that be David's discretion as if those have been satisfied?
I'm glad you're, so what I'd like you to do, because we're doing something, what I'd like you to do is make sure you send everything that you give to David to this board, so this board can make it part of its file and sign off on it.
Okay.
I'm not saying that you'd have to be at the next meeting. I don't need you to attend the next meeting. If in fact, Mr. Pesci says you're all set, that, and the plan review says it's all set, or David says it's all set across the board, David can report back to this board. We will then have the new plans with all the changes made on them. We can sign those plans, put them in the, in the file, and we're done. You don't need to come back. But I really want the plans for the file and any and all changes, right?
Right.
And any changes to the parking, any, any changes that this board has specific input to, such as parking, any changes to the paint booth, any of those types of things, we need to see. I see one of the things in here was, Mr. Pesci was turnaround adequacy for the fire department?
And I, I think the fire chief did send, send an email that said it was satisfactory.
All right, well, they're going to read that in. All right, so I just want to make sure that any of those changes, it's hard to determine whether they have to come back. I would say I'd leave that up to David. If you think that any of these changes that they may have to make through the process alters that plan in any way, shape, or form that this board should get involved with, please bring it back to the board. Other than that, you don't have to come back. Why don't we read into the record now letters? Sharon, could you read any, any letter submitted to the board into the record, please?
Board of Health looks pretty blank.
Yeah, the Board of Health, this one, please, but I will read it.
Okay.
It is dated July 20th, and it's from the Board of Health regarding 19 Merkentile Way. Dear Mr. Eddie, On June 16th, 2022, the Mashpee Board of Health reviewed the proposed commercial site and septic plan, proposed contract days, number 19 Merkentile Way, Mashpee, Mass., prepared for Capewide Construction and 53 Merkentile Way, Mashpee, Mass., dated April 25th, 2022, sheets C0.0-C6.1 by Baxter-Nye Engineering and Surveying for the approval of industrial commercial use in proposed septic system. John LaValley was present to present the plans. The proposed plans were prepared for construction of a 9,691-square-foot building for use as warehouse and showroom. One variance from 310 CMR 15.240C7 was requested for the onsite septic system as follows. A variance to allow the proposed soil absorption system to be below pavement. After a discussion, the Mashpee Board of Health voted to approve the septic and site plan for 19 Merkentile Way with the Title V variance for the Soil Absorption System, SAS, below the parking area with the following conditions, that vents for primary and reserve SAS be split, and the condition that the following standard commercial property conditions apply. Proposed drainage swales have subsurface MDC-type catch basins and leaching structures. The MDC catch basins shall be monitored yearly. The executive contract for servicing of the MDC-type catch basins shall be provided to the Board of Health prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. The architectural plans with the paint booth be reviewed at another hearing. Safety data sheets, SDS, for all hazardous products shall be kept on premises in bound notebooks. The SDS shall be available for inspection by an agent of the Board of Health. Hazardous materials shall be limited in volume to 200 pounds dry weight and 220 gallons of liquid storage. Hazardous waste shall be limited according to 310 CMR 30.00 Massachusetts Hazardous Waste Regulation. Storage of hazardous waste, hazardous material outside is prohibited. An executive contract for the removal of hazardous waste from the facility by a licensed hazardous waste removal company shall be provided to the Board of Health prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. All changes in tenancy and/or use each unit shall be approved by the Board of Health prior to issuance of a lease or sale of each unit. Board of Health Regulations Part 9, Section 5.0 require the installation of the reserve area to be installed at the same time as the primary leaching area. Washing machines are prohibited on Title V systems. They are considered industrial discharge and require municipal storage or industrial tight tanks. Boat washing is considered industrial discharge and must be addressed in accordance to 314 CMR 18.00 Industrial Holding Tank Regulation. Operations shall not cause a nuisance, or the operation will be considered noisy, noisy of some trade. Industrial tight tank requirements are as follows. A plumbing permit shall be required for the tight tank installation. Concrete tank shall be monolithic type construction. Tanks shall be sealed to assure watertightness. The tanks shall be tested watertight by holding a full level of liquid for a minimum of 24 hours and be witnessed by the plumbing inspector or the Board of Health agent. If you are aggrieved by this decision of the Board of Health, you have the right to appeal to a court of competent jurisdiction in accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact the office. Chris Wildander, Assistant Health Agent, Mashpee Board of Health.
Before you read conservation, and I think there's no comments, but Chris, I have a question.
Yes.
Three things, actually. I'm a little concerned because of the length of this process about the peer review payment. I just don't want the peer review waiting for payment.
Okay.
So if we could, at the time of, when do you record the special permit, if you were to get?
20 days if, so there's an appeal period that's 20 days from when the decision's filed with the clerk's office. So I usually record it once I get a phone call saying that.
So here's what I don't want to be is, so you get an appeal, the peer review guy waits for two years to get paid.
Understood.
So what I'd like to do is set a time limit that, that the peer review, is that okay with everybody? Seven days, okay?
Yeah.
All right, so within, so why don't we change, so within seven days of the vote, which presumably will be tonight, I can't guarantee that, but presumably tonight, seven business days, the peer review will be paid.
I just, that's understood.
You can see where I'm at.
Yep.
And secondly, and the parking, revised plan was requested for an alternative parking plan. Is that depicted on that?
That is correct. That is the, because we needed to add two parking spaces. So that is the revised parking plan.
All right, and my last question, then I'll go back to the board. Are you aggrieved with the Board of Health letter?
Nope.
Okay, you're okay with it?
We're okay with it.
All right.
And so I would just add one thing to the Board of Health. I don't know if Sharon has a, a copy of it, but there's a July 7th letter from the Board of Health for the approval of the paint booth. So I think that that should be part of the record.
Do we have that in the folder?
I don't have that.
We don't have that?
No.
Why do you have it and we don't? Are you privileged? I mean, I understand we don't get paid, but wow.
I assume that you, you had it.
Well, I guess, why don't, why don't you give it to me and Sharon, or why don't I just? Could you read that into the record, please? And then make, and have to make, what we're going to have to do is make reference to that letter and the other Board of Health letter.
We have a fire chief letter, too.
Okay, so why don't Scott, why don't you read that, please?
This is from Town and Mashpee Board of Health, July 7th, dated July 7th, 2022. Mr. Matthew, Mr. Matthew Eddy, Baxton-Nye Engineering Surveying, 78 North Street, Mashpee, Mass., regarding 19 Merkentile Way, Mashpee, Mass., since it's MAP 88, parcel 105, dear Mr. Eddie, on June 30th, 2022, the Mashpee Board of Health reviewed the proposed architectural plan, Project Great Clancy Construction Incorporated, 19 Merkentile Way, Mashpee, Mass., 02649, prepared for Capewide Construction Incorporated, dated April 25th, 2022, revised May 31st, 2022, sheets A1, A2 by Capewide Construction Incorporated. For approval of the paint booth, information regarding specifications to the paint booth were provided by Capewide Construction Incorporated. The aforementioned plans were reviewed as in public hearing in accordance with MGLB 111-S 143 as a assigned site for a noisome trade. After discussion, that the include, an included review of the guidelines for complaint spray booth operation by the Office of Technical Assistance to Mashpee Board of Health voted to approve the paint booth as a signed noisome trade with the following conditions. One, that the, that should in a butter or public be impacted by the confirmed nuisance from the facility, then the board will take action that may include a cease and desist order, revocation of the site assignment of the noisome trade, and/or orders to abate the nuisance. Number two, the exhaust stack shall be a minimum of 40 feet above grade and 10 feet above the roof peak. Number three, the final specifications for the installed paint booth shall be provided to the Board of Health. If you are, if you are aggrieved by the decision of the Board of Health, you have the right to appeal to the Court of Competent Jurisdiction in accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth. Should you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call this office. Cordially Glenn Harrington, CHO Health Agent, Mashpee Board of Health, regarding the enclosures, spray booth.
I presume you're not aggrieved by that either?
No.
Okay, so why don't we, you see probably in your motion, just make sure you're including, but not limited to, to Board of Health comments.
Is it all town comments?
It is, but I usually, when they're this explicit suppression, this along, I just put, I think it makes sense to say including, but not limited to, a letter from the Board of Health dated July 20th, 2022, and July 7th, 2022. Sharon, do we have any other rec?
Yes, I have one from the fire chief, from Jack Phalen, dated Tuesday, July 26th. Members of the ZBA, I have reviewed the revised site plan as requested by the town engineer Ed Pesci and contacted John LaValley from Baxton-Nye Engineering, who clarified the proposed fire department connection, FDC location and access. As long as the proposed layout is provided with an all-weather surface capable of handling the weight of our fire apparatus, the proposed plan complies with Massachusetts Comprehensive Fire Safety Code 527 CMR 1.00, Chapter 18. Though the revised plan does not show the FDC connection, I have requested the connection be placed on the west side of the building near the northwest corner. Additionally, I want to restate my earlier fire department requirements. All paint booth operations shall comply with Mass Fire Code 527 CMR 1.00, Chapter 43 in NFPA 33. Fire protection plan to be submitted by licensed professional or fire protection engineer, FPE, which would include the building sprinkler, fire lobe, and proposed spray booth systems. Additionally, any plans for storage of any paints and ventilation. Please do not hesitate to contact me if you have any questions. John F. Phalen, Fire Chief, Mashpee, Mass.
Could you pass that down to Scott, please? I just want to make sure that becomes part of his motion. Thank you. Anything else? You three ready?
Nothing. Conservation doesn't have any comments today.
Anybody on the board have any other, any comments or reference application?
None.
None, all right, I'd like to go to the audience. Anybody in the audience have any reference, any comments or reference application? Okay. Seeing none, Scott, you got a tough, you've got a tough motion, so if you need a little help, just let me know.
Okay, good, we got it. Just a second.
He's done it before.
Oh, I'm sure he has. So Scott, if you'd like.
Usually you're out here.
That's right. I'm not yet, you're right. He's never done it without me here, because I'm going to be like, I'm just kidding. I'm sure he'll feel great.
Are we done?
You have to make a motion, so.
Well, I didn't know if there was any.
Yeah, no, I've gone to everyone, well, I'm sorry. David, do you have anything?
I'm good.
I apologize, I shouldn't have gone to you. But you didn't speak up, so I figured you.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Yeah, I got that.
I would like to make a motion.
Why don't we get this?
I don't know. Are both of those mics on?
Yeah, maybe this is. Can't turn that off. Maybe it was because it's too close to that one. I don't know. I'd like to make a motion to approve 19 Merkentile Way, petitioner Capewide Construction, requesting a special permit under Section 174-25-G4-G5-G6, Section 174-25-G14, Section 174-25-G18, and Section 174-45.6 of zoning bylaws to allow construction of 7,272-square-foot metal building with contractor bays to be used for cabinet making with accessory storage, office, showroom, retail, and paint booth, appropriately located in an I-1 in light industrial overlay zoning district. MAP 88, parcel 105, Mashpee, Mass., with the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mash General Law 48, Section 9. Site plans prepared for Capewide Construction Incorporated, proposed contractor bays, 19 Merkentile Way, Mashpee, Mass., prepared by Baxter-Nye Engineering and Surveying, stamped by Matthew W. Eddy, civil number 43183, registered professional engineer, dated April 25th, 2022, scale as shown, drawn by J.K. L., revision date 6/1/2022. Building usage, uses, design plan sheet CO.0, cover sheet C1.0, legend in general notes C2.0, existing conditions plan C3.0, site layout plan revised 7/14/22, C4.0, grading and drainage plan revised 7/14/22, C5.0, utility plan revised 7/14/22, C6.0, detailed plan C6.1, details plan. Building plans, Project Great Clancy Construction Incorporated, 19 Merkentile Way, Mashpee, Mash, general contractor, Capewide Construction Incorporated, dated issued, date issued 4/25/2022, revised date 5/31/22. Interior layout updated, drawing scale 3/16 equals 1 foot, 3/16 inch equals 1 foot. Sheet number A1, ground floor plan, A2, east elevation, south elevation, north elevation, west elevation. Condition on all town departments, town department comments ready to the record, not limited to Fire Chief's letter dated 7/26, including but not limited to the letters dated 7/7 from the Board of Health and 7/20 from the Board of Health. Condition that the applicant will assume all payments due from the town engineer. Condition all comments from plan review dated May 17th. Condition that prior to the building per, prior to the building permit application, the applicant has successfully met all the requirements from Ed Pesci, from Pesci Engineering. met all the requirements from Ed Pesci from Pesci Engineering dated 7/25. Condition that within seven business days, the peer review bill be paid. That's all I care.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You are welcome. Good job. Scott. Say it again, please? All right, going on to the next. Sharon, would you please read the new, the next new hearing, please? Actually, the first new hearing. In fact, the first one. Continue.
68 Merkentile Way, petitioner David Ha- Hoste- huh?
Daniel.
Daniel. What did I say? David? Daniel. Sorry.
Daniel Hostetter.
Hostetter.
Should we wait for some of this stuff?
Yeah.
Wait for John.
It's Daniel. Not me. 68 Merkentile Way, petitioner Daniel Hostetter, request a special permit under 174-24C and 174-25G, 14 of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of a 9,972 square foot metal building with contractor bays on property located in an I-1 and light industrial overlay district. Map 88, Parcel 91, Mashpee, Mass., owner of record Timothy E. and Cheryl R. Tuttle, trustees.
So sitting on this hearing will be the same exact people in the lesson because they're the only ones who know. So it'll be the three normal, the three poll members and Brad and Sharon. Okay, I guess we're just about ready.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, members of the board. Christopher Corain representing the applicant, Daniel Hostetter, for this project, application for special permit. As stated in the, in the hearing notice, this is, this property is located at 68 Merkentile Way. We are, we have a 143,346 square foot lot with 332 feet of frontage on Merkentile Way. It is located in the I-1 and light industrial overlay district. What we are proposing tonight is a 9,972 square foot Morton-style metal building that's divided into eight contractor bays. We are only, the only relief we're requesting a special permit is for contractor bay, so a little less complicated than the prior, prior application. As I say, we're simply looking for the contractor bays. There's no other uses being requested, really for uses being requested tonight. The proposed building meets all side, rear, and front yard setbacks, meets the lot coverage and height requirements. There are 11 parking spaces proposed, with one being handicapped. That is what's required under the bylaws for parking. There, there was a variance received by, for putting the septic under the parking lot. I'm hoping that those comments have been received by the board, from Board of Health of that approval of variance. I also, you know, based on our discussions on 19, I wanted to make sure that I addressed any site plan review comments. There were a few from site plan review, which I put into a letter that was to the board dated July 20th. The first one came from the fire department, the requirement of a stamp fire suppression plan. Certainly the, the applicant's happy to have that conditioned on any approval by this board. Generally speaking, that fire suppression plan is submitted closer to the building or with, in conjunction with the building permit application. So again, if the, if the board saw fit to approve the project, we'd certainly be acceptable of a provision or a condition to the approval for that stamp fire suppression plan. The next two deal with the variance from the Board of Health, dealing with the, the installation of the soil absor- absorption system underneath the drive, underneath the parking areas, and each SAS unit being vented individually. Those are both part of the approval for the variance, so those can certainly incorporate those conditions. But those have both been met. There was a recommendation that the SAS capacity be at least 599. It, it was something that Glenn had recommended, just basically saying, hey, why don't you just make it as big as possible without having to do a innovative technology? But we, but the, the septic size is sized what, what they need, and it was approved by Board of Health. So at this time, you know, we're not looking to increase the size of the septic. Obviously, if there are any particular uses that would require an increase in the S, in the flow of over 599, we'd have to go back to the Board of Health and, and this board as well for the use changes. But as of right now, the, the septic that's been sized has been approved by the Board of Health. The final comment from site plan was that each unit be plumbed for bathrooms. You know, again, if that were to be a condition of this board, there's no problem there. Again, it's usually something that's probably reviewed at the building permit stage. So with that, and with me tonight are Roger Brooks, Joel from Capewide, and John Lavalley from Baxter Nye, if they have any questions. But that's my presentation. Happy to answer any questions, should the board have any.
So contractor bays.
Yes.
Have the equipment parked outside? What type of things do you envision? I mean, there's.
There's no, there's no, there's no specific uses proposed for this building at this time. In this district, generally every use is a special permit use, so if, if the, if the applicant were to rent out a bay, a bay for a specific use, that applicant would have to come back for, to this board, or if they were to sell it.
So just for clarity.
Yep.
So this, let's say this was conditioned, you obtain an approval tonight, and the owner wanted to rent out to a landscaping company, a landscaping company, women wanted to do, I don't know, something, screening of material at that site.
Right.
Maybe noisy and, and maybe dust. Would they have to come back to this board?
A contractor yard does have to come back before this board for a special permit.
Even though it's specifically stated in your application that that's what the bays are for?
I didn't, I don't think.
Well, what are you saying?
They're warehouse. I didn't, I didn't say anything about contractor bays, not contractor yards.
Wow, okay, so there's a, there's certainly a, for me, there's a clear distinction between a bay and a yard.
Correct.
So what you're saying is, just for, I just want to make darn certain of this. A bay, for me, means that the work's held inside, nothing outside.
Correct.
So no storage of equipment, no, you know, parking the car, certainly.
Right.
I get it. But no storage of equipment, no storage of materials, no storage of virtually anything outside?
Correct. Yeah, because the, the bylaw specifically defines contractor yard versus a contractor bay. And a contractor yard requires a special permit from this board. So if we wanted to do a contractor yard, we'd have to come back before this board.
So David, you concur with what I just said, that a bay would be, everything, everything is inside that garage door?
I don't know if that's totally true. Maybe Joel wants to speak, because he might know the bylaw.
The way we always got approved.
Just sit, just tell us a little.
Joel, I'm from K to Capewide Construction. A contractor bay mean, we have so many parking spots for each bay, so it's not eight bays or not, and so it's divided by so many parking spots in there. So if I have a, a trailer or, or a bobcat, if I can't, I don't want to park inside my bay, I'll park outside. That's how we always got approved. So it's not screen equipment and not storage equipment as a loom or a stone, it's nothing like that. It's exclusive to, to the contractor bay. It's not like a contractor yard.
So, so Joel, so if you, again, exactly what you said. So if I have two bobcats and I'm, I'm in the whatever business, landscape business, I could then physically park those two outside?
Correct. Correct. We always done that, and is the town always approved.
You okay with that, David? You agree with that?
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't see why not.
All right, just want.
They only have so many spots, so if they puts the two bobcats in, they might not be able to.
I'm not saying I'm against, I just want to understand, because it seems like contractor bay and contractor yard.
It's completely different. If I want to make a yard, I gotta, we gotta come back in here.
No, I understand, but so yard, but you know, if you park a piece of equipment outside, it becomes you're parking in the yard, right?
Well, but that's not, that's not really.
And I'm okay, I'm not, again, I just want clarity, because I don't want somebody coming back to this board saying, I thought it was a bay, and it was supposed to stay in the bay, but there's something outside. And I, and I just want to make sure that there's a, a definition that's very clear.
I think the bylaw said you can park any kind of vehicle, and that's a vehicle trailer or anything, whatever you keep in the yard.
So if you look at, the definition from the bylaw for contractor bay is a premises in an enclosed building used by a contractor or subcontractor for storage of equipment and supplies, fabric- fabrication of subassemblies, and parking of a wheeled or tracked equipment customarily used in the trade carried on by the contractor.
Gotcha. And I, I read it before I came out, so I was prepared with the questions. And so I said to myself, all right, so that says a contractor bay is for the parking of, right? Doesn't say, and the, and the ability to park it outside.
Yeah.
That, that becomes a contractor yard.
Well, a contractor yard is a premises used by a contractor subcontractor for outdoor storage of construction supplies, fabrication. It's almost the same definition.
Yeah.
And parking a wheeled or.
I mean, I think, as in many zoning bylaws, is, you know, zoning is, so I just want to make sure that there, there is some overlapping issues there.
So doing construction is a construction, is a contract yard, because we start a stone, we screw, screen the loom, we have to pile, doing, doing that, yeah.
But that wouldn't be in a, that wouldn't be in this application.
Correct. It's doing construction. So always.
So you could park, in your opinion, and it's, I think David's okay with it, you can park that piece of equipment outside, you could place that truck outside, you could put that trailer outside.
Correct.
But you can't do, let's say, you can't.
You couldn't store mulch on the property.
You couldn't store mulch, you couldn't make balls, you couldn't load the truck.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, that's just a different application.
It makes sense to me, yeah, unless, unless they come back.
Correct.
Unless you come back and look for a contractor yard.
Correct.
Okay. Just for, I mean, it would seem to me that's a B, because I read both of those, and I'm sitting there saying, whoa, my God, there is, there's, there's no line there.
Right. Yeah, I think the, the real big difference, I, I would suggest, between the yard and the, and the bay is the outdoor storage of materials, I think makes a big difference there.
And the activity of doing some type of.
Correct. Yeah.
Physical work.
Yeah.
All right, why don't I go around, that was my big one. Scott, what have you got?
I don't have anything. I just like, hit a town comments.
Okay. Anybody else? Anything, then we'll hear, we'll get things ready in the record, and then we'll go around the board again. Anybody have any right off the, off the get-go?
Drew has nothing.
Okay.
I didn't see anything from Board of Health.
There was, there actually is something from Board of Health, attached to Mr. Corain's letter, there's something from the Board of Health. If you read Mr. Corain's letter of the 20th, the Board of Health letter is attached there, too. He, he has privilege. He gets letters from the Board of Health before we do.
No, this isn't the one I just read.
It's July 18th. It's, it's a little different.
Yeah, looks the same.
Yeah, the heading on is actually 68 Merkentile.
I'd like to say something about the neighbors. I spoke to my associate earlier, and we will plant some additional trees to just try and create a little more buffer to the neighbors on the back street, so if there's necessary.
Well, we, I think we have, we have, I presume they'll be speaking and we'll be able to deal with that very soon, I think. So Sharon, continue, please?
Yep.
I'm, I'm.
All right, it's dated July 18th, regarding, from the Board of Health, regarding 68 Merkentile Way. DM. Mr. Eddy, on June 16th, 2022, the Mashpee Board of Health reviewed the proposed commercial site and septic plan. Proposed contractor bays, number 68 Merkentile Way, Mashpee, Mass., prepared for Daniel Hostetter, 7 Parker Road, Osterville, Mass., dated May 17th, 2017. Sheets C0.0-C6.2 by Baxter Nye Engineering and Surveying, for the approval of the industrial commercial use and proposed septic system. John Lavalley was present to represent the plans slash applicant. The proposed plans were prepared for the construction of a 9,972 square foot building for the use as warehouse slash contractor bays. One variance from 310 CMR 15.240, parentheses 7, was requested for the onsite septic system as follows. A variance to allow the proposed soil absor- absorption system to be below pavement. After discussion, the Mashpee Board of Health voted to approve the septic in-site plans for 68 Merkentile Way with the Title V variance of the Soil Absorption System, SAS, below the parking area, with the condition that the vents for the primary and reserve SAS be split in the condition that the following standard commercial property conditions apply. Proposed drainage swales shall be subsurface's MDC-type catch basins in leaching structures. The MDC catch basins shall be monitored yearly. An executive contract for servicing the MDC-type catch basins shall be provided to the Board of Health prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Safety data sheets, SDS, for all hazardous products shall be kept on premises in bound notebooks. The SDS shall be available for inspection by an agent of the Board of Health. Hazardous materials shall be limited in volume to 200 pounds dry weight and 220 gallons liquid storage. Hazardous waste shall be limited according to 310 CMR 30.00 Massachusetts Hazardous Waste Regulations. Storage of hazardous materials outside is prohibited. An executive contract.
Executed.
An executed contract for the removal of hazardous waste from the facility by licensed hazardous waste removal company shall be provided to the Board of Health prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. All changes in tendencies and slash or use of each unit shall be approved by the Board of Health prior to the issuance of a lease or sale of each unit. Board of Health Regulations, Part 9, Section 5.00, requires the installation of the reserved area to be installed at the same time as the primary leaching area. Washing machines are prohibited on Title V systems. They are considered industrial discharge and require municipal sewer or industrial tight tanks. Boat washing is considered industrial discharge and must be addressed in accordance with 314 CMR 18.00 Industrial Holding Tank Regulations. Operations shall not cause a nuisance, or the operation will be considered a noisome trade. Industrial tight tank requirements are as follows. A plumbing permit shall be required for the tight tank installation. Concrete tanks shall be monolithic type construction. Tanks shall be sealed to assure watertightness. The tank shall be water tested, water, the tank shall be tested watertight by holding a full level of liquid for a minimum of 24 hours and be witnessed by the plumbing inspector or agent of the Board of Health. If you are aggrieved by the decision of the Board of Health, you have the right to appeal to a court competent jurisdiction in accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate. This office, sincerely, Christine Willander, Assistant Health Agent, Mashpee Board of Health.
Do we have any other comments ready in the record? I think Conservation said they have no, there's no wetlands?
No.
All right. David, do you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Why don't we go over to the audience, and know there may be some comments from the audience? If you would state your name and where you live, your address, please? Name an address.
Thank you for the invitation to speak. My name is Richard F. Boyden. I live at 16 Sugar Pine Circle in Mashpee, and have done so for 20 years. I want to speak briefly because I understand the proposed configuration and buildings proposed by the petitioner lie along the entire back boundary line of my house lot. My back lot boundary line is roughly 110 feet south of my house. My back lot boundary line is roughly 110 feet south of my house. Beyond that boundary line is a woodsy buffer of 50 feet and another woodsy buffer, buffer of approximately 75 feet. The area is thinly forested, mostly undergrowth. In winter time, it's possible to see and hear traffic along Mercantile Way. The proposed lot and buildings are the only one on the north side of Mercantile Way that would front on private residences. The industrial buildings and lots opposite on the south side of Mercantile front on local businesses. Those lots have been clear cut of all trees. The only other development lot and building site on the north side of Mercantile is the Franny Medical Processing Center. It would appear to be utilizing two-thirds of its lot. The site also provides on its back or north side, a planted tree buffer of 200 to 300 feet behind the back of the house of my neighbor. I have these questions to ask the board and the petitioner, I hope they can be answered. Does the petitioner plan to clear cut his lot to its maximum allowable size? Yes, no, maybe, don't know? Two, if the petitioner does plan to clear this lot, would he consider adding on its north side behind my house, an additional 50 to 75 foot forest buffer area in addition to the mandated 125 feet setback for a total of 175 to 200 feet? Three, if the petitioner does plan to clear cut this lot to its maximum, would he provide an additional forest tree buffer much like the one behind the Franny Building along the area behind my lot line? The total distance then from the back of my lot line would be 125 feet to the proposed lot. I would appreciate your response and thoughts on these questions and be glad to answer any questions. I can give the, the board a copy of my notes here or to the lawyer, Mr. Crane.
Have you in fact seen these plans, sir?
Yes, I haven't studied them, but I have seen them, yes.
I only make that statement because you are making statements about distances, et cetera, and I'm not looking at those distances and confirming them, so I want to make sure that you've seen the specific plan that they've presented to this board.
I think they are close to being accurate, sir.
Okay, well, I just, I didn't want you to think that this board was certifying that those were those distances.
Understood.
So you asked a couple of questions, I, one specific was clear cutting of the lot. Joel, Kevin, someone?
Excuse me? We're not gonna clear cut the whole lot, we're gonna clear cut whatever we're gonna need to put the new building. And I did Franny Labs and we put trees to help the neighborhood and our, our intention is to do the same thing to, we have no problem with that.
Sir, would trees, and I presume you'd probably want to know where and how many, would that satisfy your?
Well, I guess the question is really how close does, does the petitioner plan to clear the lot? If there's an additional buffer forest land, say an additional 50 or 75 feet, that's a good buffer because then that buffer consists of roughly 175 to 200 feet. If he plans to clear cut right, right up to the end of his line, then he is much closer to the back boundaries of my neighbors. So saying he would clear the lot or not clear cut the lot is a little vague because it just depends how far he wants to extend his cutting north toward our boundaries.
Why don't you grab one of those mics over there?
I am, yes.
I'm just trying to pass you your holdest.
Right. So as far as what the cutting is, we have to leave a 10-foot buffer off the property line. So that is not, we're not clear cutting to the, to the end of the lot, so we have to leave that 10-foot. There is the parking that's behind here, so obviously that will be cleared.
So correct me if I'm wrong, you're gonna clear cut to approximately 10 feet from the property.
That is correct. And then there's a 75-foot open space buffer of land owned by the town in between this lot line and Mr. Boyden's property, and I think there's another 60 feet of tree line from that to Mr. Boyden's structure. So we're in compliance, we're 50, we're more than 50 feet off the, the side, the rear lot line, so we're in compliance with zoning, we're leaving the 10-foot setback, there's a 75-foot buffer, you know, we're certainly willing to enhance that 10-foot buffer if that, that helps, but as far as changing any of the layouts, you know, we're not in a position to agree to that.
They need that curved area paved because they need that fire truck.
Totally understood, yes. So here's a question I have, sir. Historically, when I try to create a barrier, which will mature someday, it's not instant, and I'm not making this statement, I will have to check with the applicant, but Abervite planted six foot on center, six foot high within that 10-foot zone along the length of that zone, which is directly behind the building, would that work for you?
Well, I guess I could go back to the question, does it need to be clear cut to the actual northern boundary? I mean, we're not asking them to move the building or anything like that.
It's 10 feet away from that lot.
He's not going to the lot.
It's 10 feet away.
Say again?
He's not going to the lot, he has, he has to stay 10 feet off the lot.
He's 10 feet off the lot line, and then he's clear cutting from the 10 feet.
He can't touch any trees in that 10-foot area.
So that's what I'm saying, he is, Joel, you might want to point that out, why don't you turn the plan to him so he can understand?
This is the property line, it's 10 feet.
10 feet there.
Before the property line, we can't cut. Then you have another 75 feet.
Right.
That's the town property we have to stay away. Then it's about 60 feet from.
Okay. And what I'm saying, sir, is in that 10-foot zone that he's not gonna care, he's not gonna cut trees in, to add Abervite, six foot on center, six feet tall, because I think, can't speak for the applicant, he's gonna need the other area cut because he needs it for access to his building.
Alright. So can I, can I speak real quick? Cause I'm, so my name's Mark Kaminsky, I live at 4 Sugar Pine Circle, I own a landscape company, that's what I do for a living, all that stuff. So I mean, as far as the type of trees, I'd probably like to just talk about it, cause so, like, you know, green giant Abervites, you know, depends the kind of Abervites, they tend to be deer food, that's why I use green giants. Like you mentioned white pines in the, in outside, so like white pines, you can put white pines bigger, cheaper, they grow faster, so like that, that's the thing that I would like to just, you know, the bigger, the quicker, the faster, the cheaper, like white pines, they grow quicker.
What would you recommend, sir?
Well, I mean, so depending on the area of how, how wide is, so you say there's, there's gonna be like.
It's a 10-foot zone.
So a 10-foot zone, I mean, so you know, white pines, in my lifetime, if you put 10 to 12s, let's say, just say, those would be, give you a really immediate kind of a buffer.
I can tell you, I.
Oh, so just, I'm just saying, you know, like I plant them all the time.
I would recommend, for me, being in the business of not planting them but paying for them.
Yeah.
10 to 12 caliber can be a little bit on the expensive side.
Yeah.
And I understand it's not instant gratification, as one board member here, I'm only one board member, a six to eight white pine would be fine to me, like six, six feet on center.
Okay, so I mean, like, like I said, I know, like, so the top, how, how tall is the building just out of the top?
Two stories. At the ridge, it's about 28 feet.
28 feet, so, you know, I mean, that's gonna give a buffer low, I, you know, I think what I'd like to do is just talk a little about it, cause, you know, like, I'd rather put in a few less, rather than going six foot on center, if I was doing white pines, I might go 12 foot on center and go with a little bigger tiny, because they're gonna widen out. So that, that would be something that, you know, as far as, cause, and the reason we're here is more or less just, we just don't want to look at this big building in the middle of the winter. So you know what I'm saying?
We want to be good neighbors.
Yeah, so I, so I plant, I plant all the time, so I would say, rather than putting six foot on center, six to eights, you know, I'd say, let's spread them out and do 10 to 12s. White pines are relatively cheap.
So let me ask you a question, so if they're, if they are 12 foot on center and he agrees to go 10 foot high, does that work for you?
Yes, so 10 to 12, something like that, cause I, I buy, you know, that stuff and you know, the price wise, you're probably looking.
I'm just trying to move it, and I'm, I'm not speaking for the applicant, I'm just trying to, to deal with this issue and to put it to bed and make everybody's happy.
Yeah, so what do you, what do you think?
But understand, the applicant, if this board chooses to approve it, the applicant has a right, as long as he doesn't go into that 10-foot, per that plan, he's not asking for any relief from this tour. So he doesn't have to do anything in that 10 feet.
Oh, yeah, okay, well.
He doesn't have to do anything. So I can tell you that I, I as only one member am trying to work something out to make the butters happy too, but the applicant, if he's gonna be a nice person and chooses to do so, and if he doesn't, doesn't mean he isn't a nice person, but I'm just saying if you choose.
So he doesn't have to do anything, really, is what you're saying?
Exactly, that's what I said, he doesn't have to do anything at 10 feet.
Okay.
And this board could approve it and it's not, he's not seeking any relief.
Okay, yeah, no, I got you, I got you.
So he, so you just said 12 foot on center, 10 foot high, white pine, correct?
What do you, so, let me talk to the boss.
Please do so, with the understanding that he doesn't have to do anything.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Okay. I would make the comment that it might, a site visit might be helpful for Mr. Hostetter or Mr. Crane to look behind the Franny Building and see the serving pines that were put in there, they're all in a row, and they've bushed out to probably 10 or 12 feet across.
I did those.
He's building.
Well, if he'd like to do something like that again, I think it'd be very much appreciated.
Joel, do you know, you did that building?
I think it was white pines.
And, and on, how much, how many on center and how high?
I think they were eight foot on center.
How high?
They were one in eight foot tall.
Okay.
They're about 16 feet tall.
Here's my question.
Yeah, they grow fast, I mean.
Would you be willing, now, we need to understand depth here, I presume it's the rear lot line in that 10-foot zone, okay? Would you be willing to do the same exact thing, which would be eight foot tall, white pines, eight foot on center?
Not a problem.
In the 10-foot zone?
Not a problem.
Would that satisfy you, sir?
That's as close as we're gonna get to a solution, yes.
Seems to me, would that satisfy you?
That's good, yeah, yeah.
Anyone else in the audience have a concern with this issue? Yes, ma'am?
Jean Clapper, 10 Sugar Pine Circle, so in between these two, and my husband, my husband Eric, and I guess, so for me, my question is what about the hours of operation and the noise?
Hours of operation, I presume are, are in the bylaw, so David, what are the hours of operation allowed?
Seven to five.
I think so, six days a week.
The construction or the, the usage of the building?
Six days a week.
Are you asking about the construction hours or the use of?
So after it's built, how it's gonna be used and during construction?
After, after it's built, how it's gonna be used.
So the use of the building.
It's seven to five, that's the bylaw.
Six days a week. And that, and that is a right that he has within the bylaw?
Um, the other question, I guess, is just, and I think, you know, the, the trees will help, but noise, what do you expect for noise, man, as it is now, we live again.
So the Board of Health has already, I believe, covered that, I could read it to you again, it says noise, if noise becomes a nuisance.
A nuisance, right.
Um, you, where is that actual?
You have all the plates.
We don't have to.
There was actually a statement, there was a statement made prior.
Operations shall not cause a nuisance or operation will be considered a noisome trade.
So if you get too much, and, and too much noise, what does that mean? Remember it's an industrial zone, I can't speak for the zoning enforcement officer. David, why don't you speak to that if she calls you?
We, at this time, we have no idea because we have no.
No penance, yeah.
So when the tenants come in, if they have to come back to this board, you will have every opportunity to address that.
Now, David, there's quite a few contractor, I own a couple contractor bays in the facility, in the, on the property, in the industrial park. Have you ever had a complaint about noise from any of the contractor bays?
No, I have not.
Cause we have neighbors on the other side too, we're on the side I'm on, there's a neighbor over there.
I have not, I can't think of, I can't think of.
Most people, most of those contractor bays, all the work is being done in, inside the bays, so.
Does that answer your question?
But you have the right, if they're making noise, you're hearing it, you have the right to call and say.
And, and there's a good chance that, you know, there will be hearings, that you'll be notified about.
Remember, so there, there, we had this prior conversation where they, they're gonna do 90% of their work inside these bays, they start going outside to the tune of screening, whatever it may be, they're gonna come back to this board for a special permit, correct me if I'm wrong, for that specific use, at which point you'd have the right to speak up and this board may condition it on a different manner, there might be something else added, it may be denied, we don't know, I can't speak to that, because we have not seen the application, not that there would be. So, and, correct me if I'm wrong, at this point, we're looking at eight foot tall white pines, eight foot on center along the rear lot line planted within the 10-foot setback zone. And that would make everybody happy.
Sounds good to me.
I just want to follow my comment, I am not in the butter, I'm on the other side of the industrial.
Alright, so yes, sir?
Eric Clapper, 10 Sugar Pine. I didn't get a chance to really study the plan, could you explain to me what the space is just south of the building between the entrance way and the building itself?
Do you want to turn that around?
This, this area here.
What is this area here?
Well, this, this is parking, obviously.
So what is this area here?
Uh, you got a, that's another plant in here, that's probably a retainment pond, you have to have for drainage, a whole bunch of, you know, landscape asphalt.
My, my first sight, when I first looked at this plan, I, I questioned why the building had to be offset to the residential, closer to the residential area. It doesn't seem like the design is sensitive to the residents at all. And now looking at the setbacks and with the information that my good neighbor gave you, I just, I just feel that it's really encroaching on the, on the neighborhood.
The engineer is here, he wants to make a comment about why things are located where they are.
The owner selected that location, that's where he wanted to place the building.
Yeah, I don't feel it's very sensitive to the neighborhood at all. Do you have any reference to your buildings that you're talking about and the setbacks to the neighborhood behind your buildings?
We are much closer to the residential neighborhood than you are.
You are, okay, well, that's good to know.
I'm on Industrial, I'm on Industrial Drive, and we, I have two bays and there's eight bays, and if we, our property abuts the neighborhood on the other side.
Okay.
I can see the houses.
They, they.
They're much closer than we're younger than.
Okay.
You have that 75-foot buffer, they don't have that.
And as a.
We've had no complaints, we are.
And as I pointed out, we, we do meet, meet the rear yard setback.
Yeah, I mean, see, the board, the applicant needs to meet requirements, setbacks, et cetera, he has met those, he's not, if he was seeking relief from those setbacks, this board would have a lot more discretion. It has less discretion because he is not asking for any relief.
Right.
He's meeting the minimum setbacks. So I think, as one member only, I can only speak for myself, I think he's given a very good compromise in reference to the trees, in reference to answers to the questions that have been had. At this point, I, again, I, you certainly have a right to speak if you choose to speak longer, but I think at this point.
No, I just, my question was answered, I appreciate the.
Anyone else in the audience have anything else to say?
Thank you.
Okay, um, so at this point, I just want to.
Take a picture of him. Um, Mr. Boyden did speak for himself, but we did not read his letter, do we have to read his?
Well, I'm not so sure, is it from?
I guess it's, yeah.
Well.
He sent a letter to the board.
Did you send a board, a letter to the board, sir?
No, I did not, sir.
So no, this is from Mary Ann saying that someone that they gotta call.
Mr. Karine was, I talked to Mr. Karine, he's, he's forwarded a letter.
I think she's just verbalizing it.
Okay, I didn't know if it had to be read, that's why.
Yeah, we just, we just want to make sure if you did send a letter, it was read.
No, I did not.
Alright, so is there anything else that haven't covered, we were a little.
I'm good.
Anything else? David, you all set?
I'm good.
Everybody in the audience is all set? Alright, so.
Was there anything from the town engineer?
So there was no, that was one thing on my list, so there was no peer review done here because then I presumed the design review comments were somewhat minimal. Alright, well, I'll leave that alone at this point, so you certainly want to make references to the design review comments, Scott, if you do make a motion. I think I gave those two.
Yeah, I think I got the right dates.
And Board of Health.
And they still have the, the Italian era payments that were required to.
Yeah. No, there's no payments.
There's no payments?
There's no peer reviews.
Okay, so.
There are no peer reviews, there's. I think we need to set a press, and we need to set a procedure up sometime to hollow that button.
So they don't have to pay any?
No.
Sorry.
Alright, so would you like to make a motion, Scott?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve 68 Mercantile Way petitioner Daniel Daniel Hostetter, request a special permit under section one seventy-four dash twenty-four C, section one seventy-four dash twenty-five G fourteen of the zoning bylaws to allow construction of a nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-two square foot metal building. The contractor bays are properly located in I-1 in light industrial overlay district, map eighty-eight, cross of ninety-one, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record Timothy E. and Cheryl Arctuttle, trustees with the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mash General Law forty A, section nine. Plan set proposed, contractor bays, sixty-eight Mercantile Way, Mashpee, Mass. Applicant Daniel Hostetter, prepared by Baxter Knight Engineering Scale as shown, date May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, drawn by J. K. L., sheet number C zero point zero, cover sheet C one point zero, legend and general notes C two point zero. Existing conditions, plan C three point zero, site layout plan C three point one, tower truck turning template plan C four point zero, grading and drainage plan C five point zero, utility plan C six point zero, details plan C six point one, details plan C six point two, Caltech detailed plans, stamped and signed by Matthew W. Eddy, number four three one eight three, registered professional engineer. Building plans, project contractor warehouse base, sixty-eight Mercantile Way, Mashpee, Mass. General contractor Cape White Construction Incorporated, date issued five six twenty-two. Drawing scale one eighth inch equals one foot, sheet number A one. Ground floor plan A two, east elevation, north elevation, south elevation, west elevation. Condition on all town department, according to the record, including but not limited to the letter from the Board of Health dated seven eighteen. I think that's it. Oh, and I'm sorry. And, yeah, and including the letter, on those letters, also the letter from Danny Corrane dated seven twenty.
And you might want to make reference, and I didn't say this, I should have, any other comments made by designer or plan review?
Any other comments made by plan review or design review?
You want to add the trees?
Is that a condition?
Yes, because it's not on the plan.
And conditioned upon, but we don't know what trees.
So the addition of, I'd say...
White pines spaced eight feet apart, approximately eight feet tall.
Along the northern lead.
Along the north border.
The ten-foot setback zone.
Within the ten-foot setback zone.
Thank you, sir. Well done. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Hope everybody's all set with that. Works for everybody. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as always.
Yeah, it's not on the plan. If you didn't, well, we'll make sure it gets done. Let us just finish this and then we'll do Joel's. We're going to ask for any comments in the audience.
Yeah, we're going to do it before the exact...
I'll ask for comments in the audience.
Well, sure. Joel's going to play more.
Thank you.
So when we're done with this, I'll go to the audience and see if there's any other comments prior to entering into executive session.
We get another thing too.
Oh, we do? Okay. Yes. So why don't we, why don't we go to the audience first, then we'll do minutes, and then we'll do executive session. Anyone in the audience have any issues, problems or concerns?
Anyone?
Joel.
Anyone else?
This is coming from the board, on the front of the board very soon. Turn the three steering up. I think it has to. Will represent us.
Echo Road.
Echo Road. Twenty years ago, this part of this road got hit by a lot.
You did not, Joel. You didn't get up. You might want to use the mic. And also identify yourself.
Joel Jumke to Cape White Construction.
So, and mine won the lots about eighteen feet deep to get sand. So our customers, one of our customer putting a building in there, come towards you for a warehouse for Mac Davis. They do floors and the storage floors.
Which one are we talking?
The one seventy-nine. So that time now is scrub shrubs on a hole. What I like to point to you guys, I like to take the, it's about ten thousand yards of fill I have to put back. So we work on the area all the time. We have no place to put the fill. I like to put the fill in there and compact a little bit of the time. So, but inside the hole is a lot of scrub pines. I like to tell the board, instead go and cut this, tell you guys what I like to do, is just go and take the scrub pines out of the hole. Not clear the lot yet. I'm just trying to fill the hole. Every time I have fill, I'll bring in, then I compact. Every time I have fill, I bring in.
You want to clear enough path to get in there?
The scrub pines on a hole. So I got to take...
So you're going to take the scrub pines out of the hole?
Out of the hole.
And then you're going to start filling in the hole?
Exactly, yes.
Is there anything, David, in our zoning bylaw that would, that would require him to do anything different, permitting, or is there anything requiring him to follow any guidelines?
Well, as far as I know, it's clearing of land of five acres or more?
No, no, no. So only...
Are we saying that you're not?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think he's not doing that. I don't think that he's, it's going to meet any thresholds. We do have the conservation agent in the room as well.
I guess here's a better way to put it. I thank you for coming to the board.
I just want to be clear.
But is there something that you really require to come to this board for, or another board?
No, I don't fully understand the request, but Echo Road, there has been a lot of clearing there.
Yeah. Guys, what I like to do is be clear what I'm doing. I don't want to do something with the...
There's a hole that exists now. In that hole, trees have grown, some scrub pine. You're going to take the scrub pine out.
I want to go and take that.
They're going to fill that hole.
Exactly.
Right.
That's what I'm looking for.
And I presume he has compacted to his requirements, because if you don't, he's going to ask you to get a compaction test or something. I don't, I can't tell him.
I don't.
If you don't think on it, you got a problem. But anyway, that's, I don't think that there's anything in front of this board, that this board will require you to do or not do. But I thank you for your input. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't know what we can even vote on.
Well, I'm not...
You're not asking for vote. You're just...
I appreciate just coming on. I don't know if we have any...
It's a small town and I just want to do my things the right way.
I thank you for your input. Our zoning enforcement officer...
Just a simple question. Is that the right property law?
Yes. No, 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 no.
Because Mr. Orcat, Mr. Ball, I don't...
Well, we do, we do have a little bit of issue there, but we're going to get that by the way.
It seems to me the zoning enforcement officer is very clear. He stated there's really no requirement for you per se, but I thank you for your...
Zoned industrial reports.
And we can, I think Drew is here too, so there's no, no conservation on Echo Road, I guess.
Anything on Echo Road?
Echo Road?
No.
Yeah.
So, all right. So that being said, thank you very much for that report.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
So Sharon?
I make the motion. Move to approve the meeting minutes of July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
All those in favor? I abstain. I don't think I was here. So the motion carries. All right. So... So I'm going to give Chris a little bit of time here to boot down the system, right, Chris?
Don't you have to make a...
I'm going to make the motion right now, so.
But I have to have that motion on tape.
You know, I know that. I'm just giving you a heads up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So I'd like to make, I'd like to have a motion. You can read it.
To make a motion, I move that the board convene to a executive session pursuant to GLC thirty A, section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation in the matter of BEC MA Properties, L. L. C. versus Mashpee ZBA, Principe Spirit Court, CA number twenty-two CB one ninety-one. With the chair having declared that such a discussion is an open meeting and may have a detrimental effect on a board's litigation position, the board will not reconvene in open session upon conclusion of the executive session.
And if I could just make note that Drew McManus, the conservation agent, will be, will be involved and will be involved or sitting in on the executive session. So do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, Mr. Ball.